All right, good morning, everyone. Thank you for joining us today. Councilman John Bullock standing in for our chairman, Robert Stokes, for the Education, Workforce and Youth Committee. We're also joined by Council Vice President Sharon Green Middleton, also a member of the committee, and then also we have our staff that came to the committee, Marguerite Curran, thank you for being here, and then also representatives of the mayor's office, city schools, and we're going to go ahead and get started. So again, this is an opportunity for us to have an oversight committee as it relates, oversight meeting as it relates to school performance and the school system. And so this is really just for us to hear from you, just to ask questions and get a little deeper insight. So with that, if there are no additional questions or comments, we will get going. I know there is a presentation that we have queued up from city schools, so we can go right ahead with your comments and presentations. So thank you so much, Dr. Santalisa.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Bullock. It's good to be here, and also Councilwoman Middleton, it's good to see you as well. And again, we just thank the city council for having us and giving us this opportunity to really update city council and the public on where we are with our recovery plan, which we have named our three plan, right? So that means we're focused on recovery. It means that we're focused on kind of reestablishing connections, so that restoration of connection, reconnection, and then really restoring some of what we know that our young people need coming out of close to two years of virtual or interrupted learning. It's my pleasure to introduce members of my team, my senior team, actually, who are here with us today. We are expecting Chief Tina High-Cubbert, who's our chief, oh, very good, who is our chief of communications, engagement, and enrollment. We also have with us our chief of schools, Mr. John Davis, and we also have our chief academic officer, Chief Joan DeBrowski. And they, these three chiefs are going to walk us through quickly. We know that there are a number of slides, but they will be leapfrogging over some of those slides to respect the council's time and the time of this hearing, but also wanted to make sure that the city council had the slides to be able to refer back to for additional information. I just want to, in addition to saying good morning, and just before we get started, can I say again how fabulous it is to be back and see people in person? And so that is, you know, that is reason for celebration, and it's just great to be back in the chambers, to the point I had to actually ask again, wait, which way is it? I think I forgot, so that was good. And on behalf of our board of school commissioners, my entire team, even the folks that you don't have here, we just appreciate this opportunity. For today's hearing, as I said, we're going to re-update you on our plan, and that these, excuse me, these conversations are very important, particularly as runway up to our upcoming annual budget hearings. So the timing of this is really, really opportune. It gives us the chance to give an update, but then also knowing that we'll be following up with budget hearings. I just want to also make a point of just personal privilege right now, if that's all right, just to thank my team. And I am really proud of just how staff, administrators, teachers, everyone across city schools has worked, not just this past year, but frankly, the past two and a half years. One of the things that I say to folks is, I think many of us kept saying, oh, once we get back in school in person, it will be easier, and actually, it was the direct opposite. This year, if you ask anyone from teachers to principals to, you know, literacy coaches or even central, you know, custodians and central office teams, that will tell you, this year was actually the hardest that we've had. And a lot of that is because we saw a lot of young people, and frankly, adults, coming back, and that 18 months to two years of disconnect really had impacted. But in spite of all of that, folks worked really hard and are still working really hard to make sure we are recalibrating our school cultures. We know across the country, there are challenges with school cultures, it's not just a Baltimore City issue. This is happening throughout our state, in every county and in every state. So, but with that, we are particularly, and I just want to draw attention to a couple of things, and then I'll turn it over to my team. One, our extended day strategy was one of the key strategies we had for recovery, and some of those additional, making sure we had additional access and opportunities for young people to make up ground. And we currently have 98 programs in schools supporting this particular strategy. We also have know that to date, just under 80% of city school students have now completed a student learning plan, and that student learning plan is really designed to be a communication tool and a planning tool between families, schools, about the young people, around their students. And one of the things we heard was that families wanted to be able to know, kind of, where is my child? What can we do to help my child get re-acclimated? I know, as a mom and a city school student, that that's really crucial, excuse me, is knowing that. We also have used some of the funding, and I'm happy to say, even with the challenge of recruiting tutors and the supply of tutors, we have more than 12,000 students who've received at least, at least six weeks of high dosage tutoring. We heard from our families that this was a priority. We knew from some of the research that that was a priority. And this intensive tutoring is provided during the school day with at least two to three days a week in groups of no more than four students, and oftentimes fewer. The other piece that we're proud is that in the middle of all of the challenges, we had a real emphasis on using, again, some of the additional dollars to expand academic opportunities, and our dual enrollment is seeing a real uptick. So dual enrollment is the opportunities that our young people have to engage in college level work with some of our local community, college partners, and others. And we went from 315 students taking advantage of this opportunity to just, just about 1,000 students, and that's growing every month and every day. So we're seeing that our students have more frequent experiences with online learning, and you'll hear more from Chief DeBrowski. We are very excited that this summer, we have over 22,000 seats for students for summer learning, where we will be implementing full-day summer programming for families. We had a fabulous event that both Chief High-Cubbert, as well as Chief DeBrowski, I had to be at a school board planning meeting, so I didn't get to attend, they got the fun assignment. And we had hundreds of families join us at the Maryland Science Center, where they had the opportunity to learn in person about the summer opportunities, ask questions, and as a result, also have fun as a family. So there are great things happening. We still have a long way to go, but again, just really proud of how close to 10,000 employees in city schools really pulled together on behalf of students and families. And without further ado, I will turn it over to Chief High-Cubbert.
And right as you do that, Dr. Santalisa, just wanted to publicly thank you and your team for the work you're doing, and lift up something you just said, not only in your role as CEO, but then also having daughters in the public school system. And as a father with two sons in the public school system here in the city, I recognize what we deal with in terms of families, educators, administrators as well. So thank you and your team for the work you're doing. Also want to note that we've been joined by Councilman Antonio Glover, the 13th District, and then also by Councilman James Torrance, the 7th District. So again, thank you, and please proceed.
Thank you. Without further ado, Chief Tina High-Cubbert.
So, good morning, everybody. I'm pleased to be here today. As Dr. Santalisa said, we're going to go through the slides, there are 77 of them. So we're not going to hit every single slide, but you do have the full slide presentation available to you. So I'm going to go right into our framing work. Just so folks understand, our Reconnect, Restore, Reimagine Plan, there's the pillars to that plan are the preconditions, the overarching commitments, and our key strategies. That's what the three of us will be coming to talk to you about today. We also just want to show, okay, there we go, the alignment with our board priorities. So all of our work with 3R and our blueprint aligns with our board priorities, and they are listed above on the screen. Okay, so I'm going to get right into stakeholder engagement. This is just an overview of the surveying work we are doing. I want to be conscious of Councilwoman Middleton's question last time about our work around engaging partners and elected officials and that kind of thing, but this comment here really speaks to the surveying that we've done with our families, and we are just so pleased at our beginning-of-the-year, end-of-the-year data you can see on the screen, that we have really increased the number of folks that we're engaging in our surveying to get real feedback that actually guides all of our plans. I want to highlight on the left, the far right-hand column shows you the goals we've set for the end-of-the-year surveys that are actually taking place right now, and you can see the survey administration windows at the bottom left-hand side. We're doing a presentation later in the year about the board, about what this feedback has told us, but we just know that during the school year, for the BOI and end of the year last year, it actually guided the planning and our work. So our first overarching commitment is around stakeholder engagement, and we want to talk about just other feedback we've gotten from our groups besides the surveys. So we do feedback, which is surveys, polls, questions, et cetera, but we also are doing engagement of these groups that we serve directly, right? So with students, we've had CEO conversations, with teachers, we've had professional learning, school leaders have weekly academic and operational staff meetings. As Dr. S. said, we had a family festivals over the summer, and just this week, we had one, we actually had almost 2,000 families show up, so very excited about that for, to engage them. So really just thinking of other ways that we can connect with families. Most recently, we conducted a POSIT poll that showed us, is it going to go back for me? There we go. Our POSIT poll for families, just to, just to get one example of how we get mid-year feedback, we have a new texting platform we developed through the pandemic that allowed us to get immediate feedback, so within a week's time, we can actually get feedback, and you can see the first one, we had over 5,000 responses, the second one was over 6,000 around our budget priorities or around our school calendar. So on our plan update, I want to go quickly with our preconditions. The first one is our health and safety COVID response. We want to make sure that everyone knows that we are still in the midst of testing every week for our students. We are doing contact tracing. We have health and safety coordinators at all of our schools to make sure that this work is being managed effectively. Over spring break, just to highlight, we actually sent tests home with all of our staff and students, so when they returned from spring break, they could take the tests and that we would self-declare whether they were able to come back. And so we know that there's a small surge happening right now, but we're confident with our testing protocols and procedures, we're actually doing the right work around that. We're also doing facility upgrades, 21 health suites have been upgraded, 27 schools are in design for bathroom renovations, and we're doing critical HVAC and capital repairs and projects. Around technology and connectivity, we're still committing that we're getting a device for every single one of our students. We should be well on our way to having that accomplished. We're also providing internet supports, continuing to provide those for our families, and also collaborating with city folks and other partners around the connectivity issues. One of our overarching commitments is that of elevating student voice. We have done distinct work this year to make sure that we are listening to who we serve, who are our major clients, our students and our families, and so with that, we've launched our Youth Ambassador Program, where students are actually designing projects at school to address concerns that they might have at their individual school. We're actually going to be circulating that back up to then ASCBC to think about how district can actually engage in that work. We're also going to be really intentional about adding student government programming to many of our schools. It's a pilot project we're working on right now. Many schools have them, many schools do not. So how do we make sure there's a place where students don't need to go to Instagram or outside to address their concerns, but actually have a student body they can go to to actually talk about how they want to be engaged or what concerns they might have? And we're also continuing our family engagement work through our parent cafes, and our, we've had 119 school-based leaders and staff being trained to support our families and all these different things, from our FACE Advisory to our FACE Fellowship, that kind of thing. And we're also being really intentional about translations and making sure that we are engaging our multilingual families as well. It's really critical because we now know over 10,000 of our families speak another language at home besides English as their primary language. And with that, I'm going to actually turn it over to Chief John Davis to talk about professional learning for teachers and leaders.
I have a question, Mr. Chair. Are we saving questions till the end?
You can go right ahead, because I was going to ask one anyway. Go right ahead, Councilman Torrance.
Yeah, so one of the things is that I'll put this down for Ms. Marguerite as a follow-up, the cost of the total health, health suite upgrades, that would be helpful for the public to understand the investment that you're making and why you selected those schools.
Councilman.
Let me make sure that the public can hear me. The cost will be helpful so we can understand why you made the investments, because we understand with health suites and research that that means kids get to stay in school. So I just want to make sure that we make that a good connection for the public. In addition to that, the other piece is, we know the issues that we get all the time about HVAC, we know that the numbers are down to around 11 buildings, I believe, right now. So just to get the number of how many buildings will be remaining without HC will be important in the presentation as well, and to make sure that we can have it for the council members and the public.
Yep, absolutely. Just one thing, Councilman Torrance, and that absolutely makes sense to me. I will say on the HVAC, we will absolutely get kind of those remaining buildings. I will also bring to the council's attention that those, those remaining 11 will be in buildings that have nothing now. That number does not reflect those buildings that now will have outdated HVAC that we are also working on. So I just want to make that distinction. I know you know that, but I think it's important for the public to know as well.
Yep, those are just some flags I had going through, and just so that the public has it for our next go-round, especially with budget hearings coming up as well.
And thank you for that question, Councilman Torrance. I did have one follow-up just about devices. I know there's been information around the returning, returning of the devices so that other students could use them, and so could you just give a little more context to that as well?
Absolutely, thank you for the question. So when we have seniors that are leaving us this year, we actually have, right now, have a big push to get all those devices back from our seniors, so we can actually put them back into circulation. So we've sent out information to families and community about making sure they return those devices prior to graduation, and then we are still making sure we're purchasing more devices as well, so that every, because we have to repair them, they are Chromebooks, they are not indestructible, and so we have to make sure we have an inventory of computers available, so when we start the school year, every student has connectivity to one, a device from, provided by the district.
Thank you. All right, good morning, everyone. I want to pick up from where Chief High-Cubbert left off, which was around our overarching commitment, and just speak for a second on professional learning for our teachers and leaders that you can see on the slide. And what I really want to point out is, when you look at our strategies, when you look at the different things that we have prioritized for our students, we made sure that we had ongoing professional learning for our school leaders and for our teachers that were aligned to it. I know personally, I speak with principals once or twice a month around these topics just so that we can stay informed. It's been a regular thing that we've done since COVID broke out in 2020, and we will continue this professional learning because it is absolutely an overarching commitment. As we progress into the following year, we've already began planning for what that looks like. So you can see leadership institutes with school leaders, summer learning institutes for teachers, operations institute to get to some of the ground-level work that has to happen to open schools on time, and then of course, our CEO Institute as well. So we're planning well for the summer to be ready for next year. One of the professional learning opportunities is with about 22 of our schools, it's called opportunity culture, and it's really a in-school-based professional learning that happens day by day, where some of our best teachers are working side by side with the teachers that they work with by grade level within the schools. So this is one we just call out as something that is beginning to show momentum, both with our students and our teachers. I want to transition and talk about some of our key strategies, and I think the first thing I just want to point out is something Dr. Santalisa said at the beginning. There may be four of us talking this morning at this hearing, but there are really 10,000 folks that have worked very hard across many of these strategies, and then if you include our students and our families that know about student learning plans or have been a part of home visits, then it's even more than that. So it has taken an incredible team to get to the point where we're meeting the needs of our students, and still in the middle of a pandemic. One of the key strategies is around wellness, school culture, and climate. We put a very heavy emphasis last summer, and we will continue to do so this summer. There are different domains you could see at the bottom. What I really want to point out is the high-quality stakeholder experience and the nurturing relationships. That's what we focused on this year, and if you walked into schools earlier in the year, you would see themes, you would see consistency across classrooms, and we're going to have to replicate that and probably even go a little deeper as we've learned about this current year. Another aspect of school culture and climate is really around SEL, which is social-emotional learning. What I want to point out is our intentionality around having advisory in our secondary grades and our morning meetings at the beginning of our elementary grades. And again, we do that because even though academics, reading, and writing have to be first and foremost, we have to have our students have the space and the opportunity to talk through what they're going through, to talk through broader themes, and to make sure their SEL has time in the schedule, and that's one of the reasons we prioritized it. Well, when we talk about school culture and wellness, there's also the mental health aspect. One of our largest initiatives was ensuring that our different clinicians on our school-based sites worked collaboratively together in what we called student wellness support teams. So no matter if they're guidance counselors, or if they were social workers, or if they were psychologists, they got together periodically, usually weekly, to talk through what they're seeing with students so that they can align their supports. This was something new this year. Clinicians always work very hard in our schools, but they haven't always been collaborative in getting together to meet the needs of our students, so this is one of our major pushes this year, just to make sure we're meeting the needs of students and working side by We also had a focus on staff wellness. One of the things that I am particularly proud of is, at the beginning of the year, with all the work that we were doing, what we heard from teachers is, we believe in a lot of the things like student learning plans, but we need more time. And so we adjusted the schedule, the school board agreed to it, so that we could give half-days where teachers could just work on the things that they needed to, especially aligned to the strategies that we're talking about. In fact, we just had one yesterday, where again, the second half of the day was for them to work and to figure out what they needed to do so that they could, so that they can meet the needs of their students.
I'm sorry, just want to take a quick pause right here, a point of privilege. So I'm glad that you mentioned that, I mentioned having two kids in the school system. A lot of these half-days have caught some of us off-guard initially, but it's good to know why the half-days are happening, so thank you for sharing that. And the other piece that I would also ask about, you mentioned the social-emotional learning and also the student wellness support teams. Could you talk about how that kind of came into play? Because I did notice it, you know, during the pandemic, I saw that with my sons, but can you talk about how that came to be and then how it's kind of transitioned now?
Yes. Can I, can you go back to your first question? What was the first part?
The first, first of the half-days, yes, and communicating that to parents, because I think.
Yes, without a doubt, I mean, any half-day we know is going to be a burden on parents, right? And we, we have them normally in the schedule. It's just that we heard so much from teachers that part of their wellness was they couldn't just get to the things that they needed to get to. So, you know, I think we, we probably even wanted to put in a few more, but again, you're trying to balance with the, with the community and with parents and with families, so that's why we just put in four. When it comes to the student wellness support teams, I so appreciate the question, and I'm going to be really transparent here, we really wanted to hire a lot more social workers, let me just say this, right? We wanted to hire a lot more, but across the nation, there has been a decrease, and frankly, a lot of the clinicians are working virtually and doing different things. And so even though we had put money away in some of our grant funding, we know we had to pivot quickly when we realized, frankly, in the summer, that we weren't going to be able to hire as many as we wanted to. And so what we wanted to make sure is, even though schools have social workers and they have psychologists, frankly, a lot of the families don't always know who they are. So the first thing we did was, we pushed our school leaders and frankly, trained them on, okay, just get out the information, who is your school's social worker? Who is your school psychologist? I remember Fort Worthington knocking this out of the park and literally having a YouTube video of their different clinicians and sending that out to their families. Because in the end, we wanted to make sure every family knew, if your child is struggling, or even if you're struggling, or you know someone else is struggling, who do you go to? Don't just go to the school, know who your social worker was. So it started with that, and then it began to blossom into having collaborative sessions where you can review, or the clinicians can review what they're seeing with students and who they have to support. So that was part of the path that got us there.
Thank you, and then Councilwoman Milton.
Thank you, Chair Bullock. Just a few minutes so we don't get lost. I first want to just thank Dr. Santalisa for really recognizing your team too, for the work that they continue to do. It's so, and that right there helps to push morale, to show that the leader recognizes and understands that the leader, leaders will not be who they are if it wasn't for the team, and we also recognize that as council members with, with our staff. And then also for Tina, thank you for elaborating a little bit, the stakeholder piece, and you know, all of that's connected. And I think since we're talking about this wellness piece, just some things to add that just came into my mind, along with the, I guess, renovations of the school health suites and so on. One ask I'd like for our committee, if you could give us a list, if we could have a list of all the schools that have health suites in the schools, and, and I think the reason I ask for that is because, because we are, we know that mental health is a problem just in the entire country, really, and in schools and in families, and just, and it come, wellness comes in all forms. And, you know, our ARPA money has now been distributed to certain, to nonprofits that are also working in that subject, and they're working in communities, and sometimes we get calls, you know, for, well, trying to build that partnership and connect. And if we knew some of the schools that have, you know, health suites that are really, and just the things that you were doing with wellness of the students, we can also help to connect that partnerships that have these nonprofits right within, you know, our communities that are working in a certain area of each of our district communities. And I, just a quick example, you all know Langston Hughes Business Community Resource Center, which, you know, they had a fire, they're now renovating, they do their grand opening, as a matter of fact, June 25th, and they're going to be connecting that wellness, that's going to also be a hub wellness center for kind of that area. That's just one of the things happening there. And it's like, it's trying to figure out ways to connect, again, these little small nonprofits that are doing things in the community, because they're also working with the children of the families that go to schools, the community schools. So just wanted to kind of throw that out there as we were kind of connecting with wellness, because we're, again, we're here to help in any way we can.
We can absolutely get you that list to make those connections, so that when you have them, and I would even want to make sure that you know exactly who to go to within Baltimore City public schools, so that if there is a connection, if there is a community provider that you want to link us up to, you know exactly where to go. So we'll do that.
I would say, I would just, you know, it's again, it's to try to build that partnership and us knowing where to make these connects, that it's hard to have those conversations.
No, thank you for making that, that request again, it helps us to better communicate, you know, with the community. And then, Councilmember Glover.
Thank you. What was mentioned early on was about health suites and things of the nature. What are we doing to try to secure nurses inside our school? I know it's been, you know, probably hard to find them throughout the nation, but are we like taking any steps to try to find ways to kind of solicit those individuals here to Baltimore?
Yes. First, we should just be clear, like, we work closely with the Health Department on that, because that's where the nursing and the contract and everything comes from. And yes, the shortage has been difficult at times. So we've worked, I think, with Hopkins, we've worked with the state, we've worked in to try to just do anything we can to get any type of nursing or even nursing aides where we can. So any type of innovation we can do so that we get some of the health professionals into our schools, we've been trying to uncover throughout the entire year, frankly, and I think it will probably continue for the years to come, because this is not going to go away anytime soon. We're going to be searching for nurses, we're going to have to figure out if there's more that we can pay them, we're going to have to, we're going to have to compete with the private industries around this. So I do not think we have this solved by any stretch of the imagination. I do want you to know that between the wellness teams, between our Office of Special Education, between the Health Department, we are trying to uncover as many opportunities as we can.
Thank you. One other question, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sure.
We know that mental health is very important to the success of our children.
Say that one more time.
I'm sorry. We know that mental health is very important to the success of our children. We know that mental health is very important to the success of our children. Are we putting a lot of those social workers in those neighborhoods where we know that we're experiencing a lot of trauma in our communities? I know that you said that we're kind of, I think, short of 15% of those individuals. I think it was 85%, you said that we had--
Yeah, let me, let me clarify that, right? So we have social workers in all schools, right? Let me just be super clear about that. I will say, originally, we wanted to hire more. We could not find more. And we were going to put them in the schools that we thought needed it the most. And, and when we could not find those, we ended up putting teams together at schools with the clinicians, meaning the social workers, the counselors, the psychologists, and having them work very closely with students that need the help. And again, this was a new initiative, so I think it's about 85 to 90% of our schools have done that. Even the ones that don't still have the social workers. So I don't want that to be misconstrued, so thank you for letting me clarify that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
No, and thank you, Councilman Glover, just to follow up, too, because we started talking about the health needs of our students, we talked about the nursing shortage. And one of the things I appreciate is that, again, the communication you have with families and their students regarding, you know, healthcare needs, that's something you do directly. Can you talk a little bit more about how that's communicated? Because we know, again, there are some folks who need, who have special needs, we know that, that the nursing issue is also affecting that. Can you talk about how you communicate directly with the parents in terms of learning and also the health piece?
Yeah, I mean, I think it all starts at the beginning of the year, when we make sure that our schools are communicating who is in the school and who is exactly doing what. I think when it gets to specific situations, right, we end up having different offices, especially when it is on someone's individualized education plan, to know what the situation is with the nurse. So who is your nurse? What is the situation? And even at times, if they're out, who the substitute is going to be during that day, if we can find one for the nurse. So it's usually direct correspondence from our offices around who the nurse is, and to be as transparent as possible with the, with the families. All right. Uh, I guess that just means there's a lot of questions. There we go. So let's get back to staff wellness, right? And I'm, you know, there's a long list of things that we've done. We talked about the additional days or the additional half-days. I'm surely not going to read that, but I do, again, want to stress that we try to have different events and different, different ways to appreciate and, and make sure our staff understand that we know that this has been a difficult year. Again, the second key strategy was around expanded enrichment and academic opportunities. Part of that enrichment is definitely athletics. And while it was a lot of work, we got our athletics back off the ground after the year of being virtual. And we're, we've worked hard with Baltimore's Promise and Under Armour to have a middle school sports landscape, because in the coming years, we want more and more sports to be coming up. So again, this is really just a recognition that we had to get this going, which we did this year, and now we want to expand as much as possible. And with that, I'm going to, whoops, pass it to our Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Joan Dabrowski.
Thank you so much, Chief Davis. Good morning. It's a privilege to be here. I welcome the opportunity to be in person as well, so. So as we were just talking so much about our mental health needs and of our students, I think, as I think about both athletics and then on this slide, fine arts, we also know that when we can provide opportunities for our students to come and do things beyond the academic core, it's motivating, it allows them to connect. Last evening, I was able to attend the Courting Art in Baltimore event to recognize some of our student artists. And I will just shout out here that our work around fine arts expansion has been just a wonderful space for students coming back in person, opportunities to use arts as healing, which is one of our initiatives here. We've got over 190 staff now trained in that approach. Our goal is to make sure that every student has access to fine arts. Because we know for some students, that's what motivates them and excites them to come to school. So again, really pleased by that. Now, there are a lot of things that fall into my portion of this presentation, and I think, as we've talked about, I'm not going to go through all the slides, I just want to lift up a few of the key things and then certainly answer any questions related to our work in this area. So I'm going to move us. Dr. Santalisis talked a little bit about our dual enrollment. I just want to give a shout-out, just to sort of see the progress we've made. We invested our Esther dollars in this work, so that more high schools could have these opportunities for students, and so that these offerings were wider, so more students found things and courses that were interesting to them. So again, really proud of that work as we've been moving this forward. And again, teams of people working to make sure this work is happening. Advanced placement. So even as we're talking about all of the health and safety pieces that are paramount, they come first and foremost, the mental health and wellness first and foremost, we are moving things in the academics realm that we need to be proud of and excited about. Our teachers have had an incredibly challenging year, and we are moving in the right direction and we're making progress. So in this realm of advanced placement, we can see that we are growing our programs, we're getting to more schools, we're allowing there to be more courses, because again, we're funding this, we're providing the training and the resources to make those courses possible. Similarly, algebra. So algebra is an important course as we think about a student's math journey in, in the K-12 space. If we can get that opportunity in middle school, it opens up so many possibilities for their high school path. So here, we can see that we've made this investment even before the pandemic, and we've been able to actually increase access through the virtual space. So some of our smaller middle schools may not have the staffing, or the FTEs, as we call them, to, to staff up the, the course and have it in person, but through virtual instruction, we're able to provide schools with a virtual algebra teacher so that their students can take the course. So again, really pleased to see how this number continues to grow and expand as, as part of, again, this, this academic priority. So I'm going to move through some of these, so again, if there are questions around any of this, please, please bring me back to them. But I want to celebrate, again, the work of our student learning plans. A key part of our work coming back in person was to know our students fully. And so this work, again, partnering with our families through Chief High Cupboards work, and the Academics Office, and the Schools Office, of how do we help our teachers, parents come together with students to really look holistically at who they are, where they are as learners, where are they as whole beings? And again, really want to celebrate the work of our schools, our teachers, our school leaders, who made the time and space for this. Now, we know we have to get better at it. We know, as we've talked about, staff need time to do these well. We want to strengthen the parent-family relationships with schools and knowing, again, as Chief Davis mentioned, who do they go to for what in our schools? So we continue to invest in this work, to, to provide training and support and time to do these plans well. So we've talked a lot about tutoring, and as Dr. Santalisis mentioned, since we really focused on this this year, over 12,000 students now have access to it, we've got a very clear definition, because tutoring can be more or less impactful, depending on how it's structured, where it lives in a school, a school life, I'm sorry, the day of, for a, for a student, where it lives, who's tutoring, how it's using our resources or not in terms of our curriculum. So we're very excited that we've had opportunity this year to expand it. So we use both outside providers, and we also have an internal model. But again, this internal program started before 2020, and what we're seeing is that over the last two and a half years, even with all the challenges, our internal model of tutoring, which is, again, using paraprofessionals in our schools who use our curriculum, connecting with our teachers, we're seeing some really positive impacts there. And again, we've got a small pilot here that we've got in two of our learning networks, just over 1,100 students. And what we're seeing is that in that space, we get higher attendance, because our students are sort of, it's all in-person. And again, they are in our community, and, and what we're seeing is that when we pay attention to that attendance, that students are able to get to that tutoring and, and experience it two to three times a week, we're seeing on our assessments, an uptick in their, in their progress. So we know that this is a promising practice, and we'll continue to work, to expand that.
If I may--
Please.
Councilman Torrance, speaking to the microphone, please.
Sir, can we get the data to see what the actual movement is for those students? Because it's great to say it, but it's good to see it in the actual numbers, especially if it's on your mid-year numbers from your assessments.
Sure. I mean, I, I'll check certainly with Chief Teresa Jones on how we share some of those data pieces and, and points. That's, I'll put that as a follow-up for us. Yep.
Councilman Glover?
Okay. Thank you. Just want to know how we're doing with after-school programs, with providing our students with, you know, a lot of them are into like gaming and computers and things of the nature. So what are we doing, like, after-school to kind of help them future, kind of have those careers of featuring themselves in future job careers as engineers and like gaming systems and things of the nature? And I know, because my, my son's always into that kind of stuff. So are you guys creating anything after-school to help students with things like that?
Great question. So I know, Chief Davis, some of the work is happening through, under sort of the umbrella of athletics, so some of the gaming work is, is living in that, about clubs and enrichment activities for some of that work, which is growing. I will also say, our work in robotics is growing. This is a, again, another tribute to work that started before the pandemic and really seeding these robotic programs across our schools. Again, we just sent a team to nationals, I think from seven or eight schools that went, and we were able to see, I was able to visit some of the, in person. Again, I want to just lift up the, the work of, of hosting these large events during different moments of this past year, and all the work to health, to make them safe events. And so we had several just large robotics events to see that work. And so to your point, the engagement, the teams working together with the technology and such. So yes, we are using the, the space as widely as we can around expanded enrichment activities. And I certainly know that the, the gaming clubs and things, again, it's all work that's growing to support this engagement, to get students excited to come back to school.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Please.
In terms of mathematics, what are we doing in a process to develop a curriculum that teaches our kids like financial literacy and things of the nature to help them create generational wealth as they leave school?
Yep. No, I appreciate that question. So in addition to the work of our algebra expansion and piece, we've had multiple conversations about looking at our financial literacy, which shows up at specific points in our K-12 curriculum. It shows up at the, I believe, the fifth grade, the seventh grade, and then there's a high school course. We are continuing to look at how we make sure that we have all the resources in our schools for teachers to teach that well, and that we also think about that financial literacy across some of our other content spaces. And so I know that the team continues to make sure that, that course is relevant, makes sure that we're reviewing the curriculum that they're using and the resources. It's an annual part of our sort of overarching review of curriculum.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good question. And then, Councilwoman Milton?
Hi. Thank you, Councilman, for, I guess, first bringing up the financial literacy piece. I know we have a resolution holding on that, that will probably be coming up event soon with probably the next quarterly report with the school system. Just a little bit on that financial literacy and, you know, I, I really, I'm a believer that it should be, especially in high school, it should be an opportunity for an elective half a credit or something to just really hone in onto, you know, guidelines and everything. I think our, our young people in the city really need, they, they need that guidance because they're not getting it at home. They don't know, you know, in the 10th, 11th, 12th grade, you should have a savings account in the bank. We, our city has partnerships with MeQ, you know, other banks, where I think every single 11th to 12th grader should have some kind of account in the bank. I mean, we're, some of us are taught that through our families, and because there, we have a large family dysfunction, that this is something that the school, and I think it would be an attention-getter for our young people, to keep them from, you know, falling into the spaces of gangs and so on, that basically teach them those things in a, in an illegal way, but they're getting those skills. And we want to try to capture them in high school. So I just really think you should, even if you start a pilot at one high school, particularly a, you know, high school that's, you know, where you're going to have the apprenticeship programs and so on, I just think that would be a, a great start. Forest Park High School is, is, is a example. We have several of those types of high schools around. And I guess as far as the clubs, you know, I think also another attention-getter would be like, because of us going through the pandemic and we're, a lot of the eating habits have been at home, you know, young people now are really interested again in nutrition and learning how to cook, and the simple things that also include math.
Yes.
So, and then, I guess, getting to the final question, I know that the state in the past had national organizations that had advisors in high school, like Health Occupations of America and Business Leaders of America. I don't know if you still have those club connects through, you know, the State Department.
I, I don't know, but I certainly will find, I will find out for you. And I also appreciate the, the piece around where and how the financial literacy is showing up in our, in our secondary, as well as, I will say, some of our summer learning programs are trying to harness this idea of, of health and wellness through nutrition and gardens and things, to your point about growing healthy food and such. So I think I'll certainly find out, though, about some of those partnerships. I'm not familiar, I don't know if members of the team--
And I say that, I just had, I formally, at one point in one of my careers, I was an advisor for the State Department of Education in the Career and Technology Education Department for, and Baltimore City had a strong partnership with clubs that were connected, and those students, you know, travel for national competitions and so on. I happen to have been the one that partnered with the advisors and took their students to, you know, places to compete, and the city had, Dunbar was very good in having students in those competitions with the, with Health Occupations of America. There were several city high schools that just stood out. I know that it's strong in the, in areas like Queen Anne's County and so on, but Baltimore City did play a big role in, in that connect with those state organizations. So seeking that help again would, I think, would be really beneficial for our students.
Great. Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Keep going. Okay, great. All right. Thank you. Appreciate this back and forth. It's helpful for me to be able to bring this back to the team. So I'll move through, again, just a couple other highlights. Again, we're doing a lot of work in our, in our area of literacy. I just want to shout out the, the virtual learning space as well, where we've been able to recognize that there are a group of students for whom the virtual learning opportunity worked well. And so we were able to lift up a virtual learning program this year, supporting just over 1,300 students across K to 12. We're going to continue to offer this. However, we're making some adjustments, thinking really more around starting that virtual learning program in third grade, knowing that that early childhood space, that early learning space is best served in person. So we're going to ask that we make that adjustment, and the things we're learning in our virtual learning program are things we're actually able to use across our schools. So as we've been talking about expanding algebra, expanding electives, sometimes students want to take a course that is a very specific, I'll use something like environmental science. And so we might have that as an opportunity in one school. How do we use the virtual space to broadly have sort of a, an access point for multiple students? So really harnessing the power of virtual learning and maximizing that for students. And then finally, just to shout out some of the space, we are right now in graduation season, a wonderful time of the year. One of the things we learned in the pandemic was where we can centralize our work and have systems of efficiency. Our schools appreciate it, our families, our students, and so we're excited to continue to do that as we get ready for offering, again, opportunities to come together in person over at Coppin, to really be able to celebrate our graduates this, this spring. And then we've talked about extended learning. So again, just the, the, the volume that we have been able to launch this year has been just a tribute-- this year has been just a tribute to our school-based leaders, our teachers. They are the ones who are leading these efforts, so working beyond their school day into the extended learning time. 98 programs, we're going to keep growing this so that every school has an extended learning program. And then, again, as we go into summer, really excited that in addition to using our partners that have always provided great programs for kids, where and how we use our own curriculum to signal the academic recovery work continues on in the summer and using some of our local programs here, right at our schools. So again, 54 schools are going to be using that approach and over 22,000 seats, which is really exciting. So again, happy to answer any of the questions. And all of this work is being done with thousands of people just really committed to students in Baltimore City. So I'm just thrilled that I could be here to talk on their behalf today. So thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments, or committee? Okay.
Great. So thank you, team. And then I will just turn back. I know that councilmembers asked a number of questions throughout, but also want to recognize Councilman Stokes, listen, Councilman Stokes, I'm looking right at the sign.
I know.
And I'm thinking, Councilman Volk. But if there are any other questions.
Councilman Milton, yeah.
Thank you. Any updates with that as far as homelessness? Has it increased, decreased? Are there some new initiatives out there to help the homeless students?
Yeah, no, it's a great, it's a great question. We can get you the exact figures. The bottom line is yes, it has increased. I think part of, and you know this, Councilwoman, but there's, you know, there's homeless families and then we also have homeless teens, right? And so we've seen an uptick of students coming through our re-engagement center who fit that profile from the teenage, the adolescent standpoint, as well as families. I think part of what we have really worked hard to do, excuse me, is make sure, and I know that Chief Washington is not here with us, our chief operating officer, but I know transportation has worked really hard to make sure that that commute is a lot more, and the routing is a lot, lot easier for families who are homeless. And then a lot of the similar supports that we talked about earlier with regards to social, emotional. And frankly, that's part of why the individual student learning plans are important because you don't always get just one issue, right? You actually have a number of things that are coming across in the needs of students. So we have seen an uptick in numbers. There is, you know, some funding attached to that in terms of how the state counts. But I don't know if any member of the team wants to add.
We just added someone to the wholeness team that's working on homelessness. So we add one or two people, but we added another one.
Great. Thank you. So I don't know if you heard, Chief Davis, but what you'll see in the budget that we'll be reviewing with City Council is the addition, what Chief referenced was the addition of one to two people specifically targeting our homeless student support.
Thank you.
No, thank you for the questions. Really important. And then one other question.